Draw your attention to the fire regulations which are on the screen behind me. There is no planned practice tonight, so if the bell goes, it's for real. Leave by one of the emergency exits, one, two and three. We assemble under the canopy outside Waitrose. Can I ask everyone to please switch mobile phones to off or silent? And members of the public, I know that this can be an emotive sort of meeting, so I'd ask you to understand that all matters are before you. Please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery of the committee and refrain from any booing, cheering or other forms of disturbance. Let's move quickly on to the business in hand. No, before I do that, can I introduce the officers particularly for the webcast? Louise Jandl at the far side, Peter Cleveland, Head of Development, Control, and then Ruth Duffey, Senior Planning Officer, Chris Turner, also a planning officer sitting in on the far side. So, agenda item one, the minutes of the meeting took place on the 23rd of November, is that right? Good gosh, last one. Been on the table the last 30 minutes, I contend I assign them as true record of that meeting. Thank you. Apologies for absence, Amy.
Thank you, Chairman. Apologies from councillor Pat Frost.
Thank you. Declarations of interest?
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Storey has declared a non-facundary interest in item B3 as he is acquainted with the objectors.
Any others? No? Thank you very much, indeed, Amy. Question from members of the public, have there been any?
Thank you, Chairman, none received.
And five, Peter Cleveland, are there any updates, government guidance or legislation or interest for the committee?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I have an update for members regarding the progress of the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan. The Farnham Neighbourhood Plan was submitted to Waverley Borough Council in July 2016, and that has progressed through to examination and following examination of the plan. The examiner's report has now been received. The examiner has concluded that, subject to a number of recommended modifications, the neighbourhood plan meets the basic conditions and can proceed to referendum, subject to those modifications. The plan therefore represents a material consideration to which considerable weight can be given in considering the planning balance when determining planning applications or appeals. Members are asked to note that, following the receipt of the examiner's report, confirming that the neighbourhood plan can proceed to referendum, subject to the modifications, the neighbourhood plan should now, as I say, attract considerable weight, rather than not just some weight as referred to within your agenda. That is a clear change, and additional weight can now be provided to that as it moves to its next stage and hopefully to its adoption. So I'll be pleased if this could also be taken as an oral update to all items on the agenda, A1, B1, B2 and B3, as a matter of the weight to be afforded to the neighbourhood plan. I'm happy to take any questions, and thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, indeed. That's for noting, members. Any questions? No? Let's move on then, please, to agenda item six. Site inspection, should there be any necessary, will take place on the 28th of March 2017, at a time to be agreed. But can I just plead that if you do have a request for a site visit when you have the agenda, we have it before the meeting, rather than have a deferral and a further site visit delayed. Moving on to the application subject to public speaking. A1 is land to the south of 96 Lodge Hill Road, Lower Bourne, GU103RD. And introducing this one is Ruth Duffey. All yours, Ruth, please.
Thank you, Chair. This application relates to land south of 96 Lodge Hill Road, Lower Bourne, for the provision of four dwellings, associated garaging and accessway. This is the site location plan. Site location on the south side of Lodge Hill Road, it's 1.5 hectares an area. You can see from the site location plan that although it's accessed off Lodge Hill Road, it's actually quite some distance from the Lodge Hill Road frontage, with a number of dwellings in between. The site slopes quite significantly from north to south once you're within the site and past the accessway. The land outlined in red is the application site, the land outlined in blue is land in the applicant's ownership but is not part of the application site. The land to the south of the site, that is outlined in blue, is also a wooded area that is subject to a tree preservation order. To the south of the blue line, you have Dean Lane running parallel. The site is located in the developed area of Farnham, where the principles of development is accepted, subject to its impact on visual and residential amenity. It's also located in the south Farnham area of special environmental quality, where policies seek to retain the semi-rural and well-wooded character of this area. This is an aerial of the site, so the access road goes down here, the development would be contained within this area, and the wooded area that is subject to TPO is down here. This aerial isn't totally up to date.
Because you've all put it dimmified, because I can't see a thing, other than a large brown patch.
Amy, if you could, please. It is a very... Sorry, it is a very dark photograph, John. Improvement?
Yes. Yeah, so as I was saying, this area isn't entirely up to date, because it shows the site as being very densely wooded, but since this aerial was taken, trees have been felled on the site in coordination with our tree officer. So the site in this particular section is not as densely wooded. In addition to this, two dwellings have been built just to the north of the site, adjacent to the accessway here. You can see from this area in terms of the character of the area, that this particular part of Lodge Hill Road is characterised by large dwellings in large plots of land, and that the area is well-wooded. So turning now to views within the site. View one shows just an image of the accessway, taken from within the site, looking towards Lodge Hill Road. View two is taken from once you're within the site, looking southwards. So in the distance, you can see the band of woodland that is subject to the TPO, and this picture also gives you some idea of the felling that has taken place on site. View three is looking westwards, and this shows an area of land where felling has occurred to make way for one of the dwellings, and it shows the trees in the distance that are subject to the TPO. And view four looks to the east of the site, and again, this shows the TPO trees on the boundary and areas where the trees have been thinned. So this is the proposed block plan. In essence, the proposal is for four substantial five-bedroom dwellings. Each would have a detached garage, with the exception of plot two, and this would have an integral double garage. Each plot would also have its own turning area, and in terms of highways considerations, Surrey County highways have raised no objections to the proposal. You can see from this block plan, these hashed areas of green, areas that would be laid to lawn, these sort of squares around the site are the wooded areas, and these trees within the site are trees that are proposed to be retained, and there is also some additional planting proposed. You can see the plots are quite considerable in size, there's quite substantial distance between each residential unit within the site, so in terms of the amenity of those units, officers are satisfied that there are sufficient separation distances. This block plan also shows a number of residential dwellings around the site, and again, due to the distances involved and the level of screening around the site, it's considered that there'd be no harm to neighbouring residential amenity. So I've just put up the front elevation of each dwelling. Essentially, they're quite traditional in design, they're all very similar in design but differ slightly, and they try and model the arts and craft style. So this is plot one, plot two, plot three, plot four. And then finally, I've got the floor plans for each dwelling. They're broadly similar in that they provide a number of reception rooms on the ground floor, along with a kitchen dining area, and then each dwelling would have five bedrooms on the upper floor, with some having en suite bathrooms. And the accommodation is considered to be of high quality. So just turning to the determining issues, in terms of the matters of principle and technical opinion, these comprise a principle of development, housing land supply, highways access and parking, standard accommodation, amenity space, impact on trees. We've touched earlier on the fact that some of the trees have been felled within the site. The tree officer has given quite extensive comments on the proposal, which is set out in the report, and he raises no objection subject to planning conditions. Affordable housing, because of the size of the proposal, it would trigger a requirement for affordable housing provision. Given the nature of the proposal, it's considered that this is most appropriately secured through the provision of a financial contribution, and this would be done through a Section 106 agreement, and there is an update sheet to that effect that you should have received. Turning to matters of drainage, Thames Water and Surrey County Council, SUDS team have raised no objection. With regard to archaeology, this can be covered through a condition requiring that a programme of archaeological work is put in place during the construction of the development. The site is located in five kilometres of the Thames Basin Heath, so the development would require a financial contribution towards the avoidance strategy for the Thames Basin Heath. And with regard to biodiversity, conditions would ensure that mitigation measures could be put in place to ensure there's no harmful impact in this respect. So in terms of matters of judgment, we've touched upon the impact on residential amenity, which officers consider acceptable in this instance. So then we turn to the matter of the impact on visual amenity and impact on the special area of environmental quality. Officers have given this careful consideration, and given the fact that the dwellings would be well screened from public vantage points, and that there would be substantial numbers of trees around the site that would be subject to tree preservation orders to ensure they remain protected, and also given that the pattern of development that is proposed, being large houses in large plots, respects the established pattern of development in the area, officers are of the view that the well-wooded and semi-rural character of this area would be retained, and that the proposal would not cause harm on this basis. So in conclusion, as set out in page 35 of the agenda, officers are recommending approval of the application, subject to completion of a Section 106 agreement, securing a contribution towards the SANG, a contribution towards affordable housing and waste and recycling containers, and subject to the relevant conditions contained within the report. We also have a recommendation B, in case those provisions are not met, and these include the failure to secure the contribution for the Thames Basin Heath avoidance strategy. In addition to this, I need to update you verbally on two further additions to recommendation B, which would be two further reasons for refusal, and this is all based on not being able to secure the provisions that we need to within the Section 106 agreement. So the first reason for refusal to add would be that in the absence of a completed legal agreement, the proposal would fail to provide affordable housing to contribute to the borough's needs. The proposal would be contrary to policy H5 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002, the West Surrey Strategic Housing Market Assessment 2015, paragraph 17 and 50 of the MPPF 2012, and policy ANH1 of the Draft Local Plan Part One, Strategic Policies in Sites 2016. And the second additional reason for refusal for recommendation B would be that in the absence of a completed legal agreement, the proposal would fail to secure contributions towards waste and recycling, and as such would fail to mitigate the effects of the proposal upon infrastructure. It would therefore conflict with policies D13 and D14 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002, and paragraph 203 of the MPPF 2012, policy ICS1 of the Draft Local Plan Part One, Strategic Policies in Sites 2016, and policy FNP32 of the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan as modified 2016.
Okay, thank you very much, Ruth. Right, now we move into the area of public speaking, and Amy has explained the system to you, so I'd ask first of all the objectors, Wilbur Adams and Rachel Lance, to speak.
I am, my husband's at work.
Thanks. Right, you have four minutes. Thank you very much.
I believe that the sewage from these houses is coming down Dean Lane, it's not going via Lodge Hill Road. I live at the end of Dean Lane, and I have been there six years, and that time we had three sewage-like leaks. I've got a drain in my garden, and three times it's sewage from the whole lane, it's overflowing. Thames water have come out numerous times, and they scourred, there's lots of trees, all the tree roots, and they've done that. But the thing is, we've also got a pumping station which pumps the sewage way. So when you have a power cut, the pumping station's turned off, and that happened in the summer, and we had another blockage as well. And also the thing is, we have a ditch, so when you have lots of rain, the rainwater is carried along the ditch and it goes to the river way. So when you have these sewage leaks, obviously that's going into the ditch. So if, you know, if we had a reliable sewage system, and we didn't have a pumping station, I wouldn't be bringing this up, it's just because Dean Lane, we have such strange, antiquated, you know, the way it's taken away. You know, why can't the sewage be taken away via Lodge Hill Road, where I'm sure there aren't the same amount of problems? That's what I'm saying.
Right, thank you very much, indeed.
Okay. Do I turn this off? Yeah.
Thank you very much, thank you. So now invite the supporter, Janet Long, to speak. I'm sure, Janet, you know the procedure full well. Thank you. Four minutes.
Good evening, members. I'm here to speak in support of the application for the four detached dwellings on the site which is accessed off Lodge Hill Road. We welcome the officer's recommendation to grant permission, and we consider this as an appropriate form of development in the existing built-up area of Farnham. In designing the scheme, regard has been made to the special character of this part of the district, with particular reference to the criteria of policy B3, and subsequently, more recently, the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan. In this respect, and as seen from the site layout plan, within the officer's report and shown on the screen earlier, the pattern of development is low density and reflects the character of surrounding areas along Lodge Hill Road. This layout has been designed to respond to tree planting within the site and around the site boundaries, and does not require the removal of any trees. In this way, the character of the wooded surroundings is protected and respected. It is important to note that the development will not be visible from any surrounding property, and in this respect, there'll be no impact on any neighbour. There have been no objections from many statutory consultees, and in this respect, we consider we're able to demonstrate the development is acceptable. In addition, the applicant has agreed to make a substantial contribution to off-site affordable housing, which will form part of the Section 106 agreement. As such, we hope we will be able to support this proposal, which will contribute to meeting housing need in the district on land which is sustainable and clearly suitable and available for development. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet Long. Members, open it up to you. Councillor Lee.
Thank you, Chairman. Policy B3 has been something we brought up many times before, and I've raised it a few times with the previous head of planning, and also, I think, with the existing head of planning. This site sits in my ward, I do know it well, and I also know the development that has taken place on this site by the developer that's doing this, and notwithstanding what he does, he does provide quality and nice products, so they're good homes. However, it's back to policy B3, and it's down to interpretation of policy BE3. I'm just a little bit sick and tired of having policy where we just seem to ignore it, and we ignore it time and time and time again. And for members that aren't familiar with BE3, I'm looking at it now, this area, we've been told is built-up area, well, it's not, it's actually incredibly wooded around that area, hence why it's a south Farnham area of special environmental quality, it's not built-up area. Developed area sits out to the west, admittedly, but not here. So if we want to examine the minutiae, and I'm not going to go on for too long, with regard to BE3, just looking at it here, lead to an erosion of its semi-rural character, well, it has to be a yes, because it will, it's as simple and basic as that. I can't dispute if you think the scale, pattern and density of surrounding developments, okay, we can look at those too, they're fair-sized gardens, you know, okay, I won't argue at that point. What I will say, though, is that, does it detract from the well-wooded appearance of the area? The argument is, yes, it does. But the real issue for me is item D of policy BE3, and it says, does it lead to pressure for the fragmentation of other development? And this is an issue that residents get upset about, because what we've seen before, and can I ask the officer, please, to put back up the aerial photo, one of the original ones you put up? Actually, the original one, right up in the top middle there, those properties there, the developments there, those are new developments that I think were, I'm right in saying, were actually turned, the committee was turned over at appeal, and they were passed by the inspector. And the arguments were raised then with respect to item D, you know, should they, should they not be granted, these properties? And it was because of item D, lead to pressure for the fragmentation of other development, he said, no, it wouldn't. This is, in its very essence, further fragmentation from those properties, because precedent's been set. So item D is either policy, or it isn't. What we're seeing now is either flying in the face of the policy, the policy needs to be changed, removed, or we abide by it. So notwithstanding the fact that these developments, they're nice homes, I've walked around it, I've had a good look at it, they are nice properties, but are they appropriate with regard to policy? And my argument is, if policy is such, then no, they're not, and for that, I cannot support it. If we want to support it, change policy. But I can't with the policy we have. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Hargreaves. Councillor Coburn.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I couldn't agree more with councillor Leah. This site has been contentious for years. When they started to develop it, a huge fence went right round the whole of the site and down the side of a footpath. I've forgotten what the height was, but it was at least half to make it look a little bit more acceptable. The whole atmosphere and character of this area has changed as a result of what's been happening on this site. And I think, I've raised this, I'm a little bit disappointed about the lack of consultation with local members on this particular application, because we have raised before on previous applications, that you don't just look at the site from Lodge Hill Road. Lodge Hill Road is one area, but this site is highly visible. The Bourne has well-wooded ridges, that's what it's known for, and looking across from the Bourne Woods, you see the, I don't really want to use the word devastation, but the change on this well-wooded ridge. As councillor Leah said, it was trees, wall-to-wall trees, that's all it was, it was lovely wooded ridges, which is what the Bourne has, which is what policy BE3 sought to protect. It doesn't protect the whole of the Bourne, it doesn't say you can't build anywhere in the Bourne, it says in this particular area, you have to respect the pattern of development, which is houses in individual curtilages, not houses that have shared amenity space or any part of their building shared as such. They are as sitting separate in their plots and surrounded by greenery, that was how it all started, and that was what policy BE3 was seeking to preserve. And councillor Leah and I have been 100% consistent on this, banging our heads against a brick wall, we've had some successes, we've had some failures. But when we were doing the neighbourhood plan in Farnham, it was very clear that this policy, which is a saved policy in the new local plan, it's a policy that when I spoke to Elizabeth Sims, the head of planning, she suggested that we actually made it stronger in the neighbourhood plan, actually put more behind it, because she was aware that it was weakening. Whether or not our wording has achieved that, I don't know, but I think our support for it should achieve that. What, as councillor Leah said, what is the point of a policy which seeks to protect just small pockets of wooded area, so that we retain that feel, that green feel, as you come into the town? The Bourne is on the outskirts of the town, that's the whole point, you have the green, look across, go across to the Bourne Woods, look across, and you'll see the difference in this site. So I'm with councillor Leah here, nothing hates the houses anywhere else, they'd be perfectly acceptable, but in this type of development, you've turned what was once a beautiful setting for three or four houses which were developed from an old house plus the stables, and you've turned it into a modern estate. The trees, a lot of trees have gone, I mean, you know, we saw these few spiky bits, I mean, we are talking a lot of trees that have gone on this site. A lot of work has happened in preparation for this development, and I just, I remember when Mary Foraszewski was speaking at another planning application and said she could weep, and I thought, you know, maybe that's a bit strong, but quite frankly, do you know, I could weep at this. I really do think what's happened to that ridge along Lodge Hill Road is really very, very sad.
Councillor Hargreaves.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I will try and be brief and not repeat what my previous colleagues have said, although I totally agree with them. Today, I re-familiarised myself by driving up Lodge Hill Road, and I was quite horrified to see the amount of development that has taken place. And we, as a committee, are actually at fault. And I was on the panel at the time when, all those years ago, when I was a green councillor on planning, for want of a better word, who disregarded BE3 and let the development happen. Now, we have the result of that ridiculous agreement that they could develop. That road is no longer the same, it's becoming like a mini-town, it will be a mini-town with more estates. Surely, goodness, we must be sensible, and regard BE3 before it's too late. Enough is enough. We have spoilt that road, and I certainly do not want to spoil it anymore, and I cannot possibly vote for this development. Thank you very much, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Hime.
I have had communications from residents in respect of this, and they are in line with the board councillors, councillor Coburn and councillor Leah, in respect of policy BE3, which states, and I'm going to quote it, "New development for housing will not be allowed within the areas of south Farnham if the council believe that the development would lead to an erosion of its semi-rural character." So, you know, I find it difficult how an inspector can overturn that when a legal, well, really, you know, through the courts you would expect that we should win, because the council clearly, you know, did in the previous case, and probably would again, I've seen from what I've heard so far, believe that the development would lead to that erosion. So I believe we have got a very strong case there. I can't argue with that. We need development around Farnham, but the sort of development that I think we need in the short term, certainly whilst, you know, there's another issue which councillor, Mrs Hargreaves, raised, to the point that, you know, the committee was at fault for allowing developments, and these are quality developments, this firm does, I agree with councillor Leah, I like them, but, you know, there has to be a limit. And the law, we know, as well as ignoring BE3 in the past, we've had, and I've said it before, and I will continue to say it... it before and I will continue to say it until, we've now got a legal opinion from Robin Purchase sent to all joint planning members, which says, "In respect of the impact on the Weldon Heathes," which this one is, he says, "the moment the consideration of in combination effects included, the floor in the office's approach is exposed." We have got very strong grounds for refusing this sort of development at this time and in respect of that, I don't think I'm able to, just as a matter of law, I don't think I'm able personally to vote in favour of it. There was one thing that I wanted a clarification of, because it might help others. If you wouldn't mind putting up the location plan, Amy? One of the first ones that was put up there, or Ruth, sorry, whoever's in control. Oh, I can't trace it. Yes, there is a comment that, I mean, I think the property in the, to the right of the blue section is number 41, is it, in Dean Lane? And there was a, is that right? And there was a comment that the tree preservation line actually goes across in a straight line from the boundary? So has there been felling of TPO trees? I think the officer's report says, probably, trying to see where it is, that there've been 50 tree, prime trees already gone there. I'm surprised that the works have commenced without consent, it would appear, I don't know about that. If you can confirm whether trees have been, a lot of trees, at least 50 mature pines have been taken without any consent, or whether I'm wrong about that? And whether the boundary of, the northern boundary of, the TPO line should follow the northern boundary, the extension of the northern boundary of 41 Dean Lane? And whether that has an effect on our determination here, in addition to the two points already raised, in BE3 and the effect on Weldon Heathes? Thank you.
councillor Fraser.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm going to make no apology if I repeat many of the statements that have already been made. We, sometimes councillors representing more urban areas of Farnham are accused of not having much regard for the verdant Arcadian suburbs to the south, but many of us do. And in my case, I feel particularly strongly about the loss of the trees. The Lodge Hill Road tree screen has been denuded. I know, under planning law, we're not allowed to take on board the effect of cumulative aspects, but this site has lost 50 trees, I'm told, 50, already, before planning application. And looking at the photographs, I see those that remain are mature Scots pines. Now, leaving them exposed to the wind will probably mean they're going to skittle over in the wind. Should never have been treated that way, I think it's scandalous. I hear a lady from Dean Lane concerned about sewerage surcharge, just another aspect of the total inadequacy of our infrastructure. Yours is not the only sewer that surcharges, madam, there are many others in Farnham. And I think that should be seen as a, no more development should be allowed to put sewerage into that sewerage line until the line and the pumping station are upgraded. In the Farnham Consultative Committee, we looked at this scheme and we looked at many of the determining issues, some with more concentration than others. We looked at the visual amenity and the residential amenity in BE3, we looked at the access, we certainly looked at the impact on the trees and drainage, and we also looked at biodiversity and we forwarded our consultative conclusion to Waverley with a very firm thumbs down. And it shocks me to read an officer's report that really is totally at variance with the feelings that were expressed at our meeting. And I have very great respect for the competence of the officers, they've considered every point thoroughly, exhaustively, but in every case, they've come down on the side of development, which I think flies in the face of the evidence that we have before us this evening. And I will certainly be voting against this proposal. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you councillor Fraser. Just add one little comment on BE3 and the Bourne, semi-rural area. When we saw some of the photographs that were shown there, I saw boundary treatment of fences, wooden fences, totally inappropriate in the Bourne area. Wooden fences, no. Boundary treatment should be the natural green shrubs, trees, et cetera. So I feel quite strongly on that one and support some of my colleagues. councillor Ward.
Thank you chairman. I won't go on too long about fragmentation and change in the semi-rural character, I think I agree with the comments made by earlier people. Something that your vice-chairman said struck a bit of a chord in me when she said "modern estate". And looking through the replies from the consultees, I find a few strange things there which I would be grateful if our officers could explain to me. Page 17, it says we should have an electric charging point for the development. Now, I live in a detached house and my detached house neighbours, I can imagine the fun and difficulty we would have if an electric charging point were popped in our shared driveway, because, you know, we'd either want one for ourselves or we'd want one in a more public place. So it seems as though this is being viewed as a modern estate, which causes me some concern. I also note on page 18 that it has been requested that they have large litre capacity bins for the area, rather like a block of flats. So could the officers please tell me if this is being treated as a modern estate and if the idea is to have large volume bins for these four houses? My neighbours, again, are quite personal about their rubbish for some strange reason and prefer their own personal bins, so it seems as though this is being treated rather as an estate or that is what our consultees would like us to do. I also note that one of the things in its favour is that it's bringing in money in the new homes bonus. I notice as it is 2016 submission, were the comments on new homes bonus written before the government cuts to new homes bonus? So I suppose three questions, electric charging point bins and new homes bonus, and I'd be grateful if someone could just fill me in a few details.
Peter Cleveland. Yes, thank you chairman, I'll pick those up in order. In terms of the electrical charging points, the purpose of that is to try and encourage the use of electric cars, which in turn help improve air quality, and there is an air quality issue within that part of the borough and the purpose of that is to provide it. In terms of your concerns about whether it might be shared, we haven't got the final detail yet, but what the wording, the condition is, prior to commencement of development, we would have a scheme detailing that provision, whether that's a shared area or a communal area, or whether that's in an individual property, but we haven't got that detail before us, but the intention of it is to assist and encourage, we can't make people, but encourage and make the provision available if people do choose to have an electric car. In terms of the bin storage, that is the standard requirement for bin storage and bin requirement that Waverley has in terms of its collection, recycling and refuse. That's what is required for each dwelling within the borough and that's just setting out the standard for that. They may seem quite large, but that is appropriate individually for an individual, or private residential dwelling or single residential dwelling. In terms of new homes bonus, we note that there is a change coming forward, but that hasn't bitten yet, but it will come forward in through the next financial year, as far as I understand, and that will be updated when that is relevant going forward, as it bites in. Thank you chairman.
councillor McLeod.
Thank you chairman, I don't need to say too much here, as I'm largely convinced by what other members have said, particularly two ward members, but I've got two questions actually for the officers, if I may. One is, I think the lady who spoke as an objector does deserve some sort of response on this sewerage issue, there's nothing said in the report that really says, other than Thames Water saying there's no problem with sewerage capacity. I'd be interested to hear any views of the officers on that. My second question really is that, it seems from what Peter Cleveland said at the start that the change in status of the neighbourhood plan has occurred while this application was being considered, and it seems to me that that may possibly have an effect on the officers' views, the fact that it has to be given much greater weight. Is it correct to say, I just ask the question, if that status had occurred before the officers considered this plan, would it in any way have affected the decision? Because it seems to me it probably should have done. Councillor Coburn's a much greater expert in the neighbourhood plan than I am, but from what she's saying, it seems to me this application just doesn't fit with the neighbourhood plan, and from my knowledge of it, it doesn't seem to, and does the fact of this change of status, would it have any effect on the officers' views? Thank you chairman.
councillor Storey.
Thank you chairman. I note from the block plan that plot three and plot four in particular still have a considerable quantity of woodland retained within the red line area, and I'm just wondering what the status is in regards to the tree preservation orders, whether that woodland is protected by TPO or not.
Ruth.
Thank you councillor, just to confirm that the area within the site outlined in red is not covered by the tree preservation order, with the exception of one small corner here. So potentially, it would be possible for the developer to fell the trees that are contained within the site, however, they do provide screening between the proposed dwellings that it's likely the developer and those future residents would want to retain.
Sorry, chairman.
Peter Cleveland. Oh, sorry, you want to come back?
It's likely, do you have a question whether that's likely or not?
Just make a comment on sewerage. I live in the highest village probably in Surrey, in Hindhead, 850 feet above sea level, and you think everything goes down, we have sewage problems up there too. So it is a point of infrastructure throughout the borough, I think. councillor Hyman.
Yeah, but sorry, but can you have a specific answer to the question that came from Reginald from Dean Lane in a public speaking, as to, is it, can you confirm that the sewer that runs under Dean Lane and down to, I think it's Black Pond Pumping Station, will be used by this development? And answer the question which she asked, is why can't this development provide, if that is the case, why can't this development provide its own pumping station to use Lodge Road? I think she deserves an answer anyway.
Ruth.
In answer to councillor Hyman's question, we don't know where the sewer route that is going to be taken with the site, however, I did have quite a detailed discussion with Thames Water yesterday because of the concerns around sewage. They have looked at the details very carefully and they are fully satisfied that there is sufficient capacity in the network for this particular site.
Thank you. councillor McLeod.
If I can come on, chairman, you actually moved on without asking the officers to respond to the questions asked, as it happened, I've answered the one about sewerage, but I wonder if I could ask, request an answer from Peter on the one asked about the neighbourhood plan, if I may.
Yes.
Yes, thank you chairman, the status of the neighbourhood plan is as I set out in introduction as an update, so the weight to be afforded of that has been lifted, increased. But members will be aware that from pages 21 through to 25 of the agenda, that provides a detailed assessment, particularly against BE3, appeal statements, but it also does take account of FNP8, which is the new policy that covers this area as well. So we have taken that into account in terms of the determination of the application, or in our assessment and recommendation, but it follows the detailed discussion which officers have made a view, but that is a matter for judgement that we put to members. Thank you chairman.
Thank you. Members, can we move to the recommendation? The recommendation, subject to the completion of 106 agreements secured, Thames Basin Heath SPA contributions, contributions towards affordable housing and contributions towards waste and recycling containers by the 1st of June 2017 and conditions 1 to 21, informatives 1 to 7, on pages 35 to 44 of the agenda, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation, please show? Those against? Unanimous, unanimous, thank you very much. May I have an alternative proposal and a seconder, please? councillor Hyman.
Proposal, sorry, have we got a proposal? We haven't heard a proposal yet, I would propose.
No, no, I need someone to propose.
Okay, I thought you were asking for a seconder actually.
I said and a seconder.
Is that my cloth ears, is it? Yes, contrary to policy BE3 of the retained local plan, I believe, but I don't know policy number in the neighbourhood plan, which we should refer to.
Sorry, you're proposing a refusal.
Propose refusal, yes.
And you have a seconder?
Yes, he does.
Thank you very much councillor Fraser, and reasons for refusal.
BE3 of the retained local plan, I think it's a place to start, isn't it? Of the retained 2002 local plan, I think we refer to at the moment, is that correct? And the neighbourhood, Farnham neighbourhood plan, there would be a policy in that, which I have no idea what the number would be.
Sorry, Louise.
There is a. If it's helpful, I can suggest some wording on the basis of your discussion and from what you've said, what I think the relevant policies are that you should refer to.
Okay, thank you.
I would suggest, the site lies within an area of special environmental quality within which the local authority aims to promote landscape enhancement and conservation of the local area's distinctiveness. The development by reason of its quantum size and sighting would lead to an erosion of the semi-rural character of the area and attract from the well-wooded appearance of the area, leading to pressure for further fragmentation of the woodland. This proposal conflicts with policies BE3 and D1 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002, policy TD1 of the draft local plan part one, strategic policies and sites 2016, policies FNP1 and FNP8 of the Farnham neighbourhood plan as modified 2016, and paragraph 1758 and 64 of the MPPF 2012.
That sounds very comprehensive.
There's also a standard condition which covers the SPA issues, isn't there, because it's not, so that would have to come back again.
Yeah, I would also recommend the free refusal reasons that Ruth outlined at the beginning in relation to the failure to sign the legal agreement, the first one of which is on the agenda relating to the impact on the SPA, and the second and third ones Ruth read out to you as a verbal update before, when she finished her presentation, which related to the failure to provide contributions towards waste and recycling and the failure to provide the affordable housing contributions.
Thank you. Members, is that understood? And therefore, can I have a vote? Those in favour of refusal, please show. Unanimous, thank you very much. Therefore, recommendation B is not required, we move straight on to non-public speaking items. Item B1, WA 2016 2240, erection of five dwellings with associated parking and amenity space following demolition of existing commercial buildings and removal of hards standing at Abbott's House, 14A Hale Road, Farnham. buildings and removal of hards standing at Abbott's House, 14A Hale Road, Farnham, GU99QH. And this is Peter Cleveland.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. The application site measures 0.15 hectares, and located to the south of Hale Road, behind residential properties, as you'll see on this location plan. Access to the site is via an existing tarmac driveway leading off of Hale Road, in between numbers 14 and 16, Hale Road here, as shown on plan. It's an aerial view of the site. The site previously comprised a detached two-storey office building, detached single-storey office building, and associated car parking and garden space, which you can see from the aerial view here. At the time of the officer's site visit, works pursuant to a granted planning permission, WA 2015 0493, for the erection of four dwellings has commenced on site. The site slopes down gently to the southwest and is bounded by the rear curtilage associated with surrounding and existing residential and commercial development. So planning permission is sought for the erection of five residential dwellings in the form of a terrace of three and two, and, sorry, a terrace of three two-storey properties and a pair of semi-detached two-storey properties. This includes associated landscaping, vehicular turning head, vehicle parking spaces, and domestic outbuildings, which you can see on plan. These sort of round outlines are the outbuildings that are referred to. Hopefully, you can see them on plan. So in terms of plot one would comprise a two-bedroom unit, with plots two to five comprising three-bedroom units. The proposed units would be of a traditional design, as you can see on screen, featuring barn hip roofs, timber sash windows, ornate fascia detailing, eaves and bargeboards, and gable protrusions to plots three and four, as demonstrated here. That's plot three there. Plot two and three would benefit from single-story rear additions. And I'm just showing you the floor plans now, and you can see them shown. And plots one to three would measure 16.5 metres in width, as shown on plan, and 10.5 to 12.8 metres in depth, with an overall height of 9.1 metres. Plots four and five would measure 11.3 metres in width, 9.8 to 10.3 metres in depth, and with an overall height of 8.9 metres. A total of 12 parking spaces would be provided within the site to serve the proposed units, along with vehicle turning head. Just taking you through the elevations now on screen, plots four and five there, and the floor plans for plots four and five. And you'll see there the three-bedroom dwellings with, at first-floor level. So as I mentioned at the beginning, planning permission has been previously granted on the site for the erection of four dwellings, following demolition of the existing offices previously situated on site. And that works to, has commenced for those developments. The main differences between the previously approved scheme and this current scheme are the increase in number of dwellings from four to five, and that is four number three-bedroom dwellings and one number two-bedroom dwellings. 12 vehicle parking spaces are proposed under the current application, in comparison with the 10 required under the four against the council's parking guidelines. The design of the proposed units sought under this application will be more traditional in comparison with those approved previously. On the screen now, there are the elevations of the previously approved scheme. And there are the floor plans shown, also to assist, and it was two semi-detached properties. Again, they're plots three and four, very similar design to one another, plots one to four. And again, the floor plans as well, which are the same. So this is a site comparison which has been provided for us. Plot one would actually be located approximately 1.8 metres further from the eastern boundary, which is this boundary here of the site, shared with six and seven forge close, than that previously approved. That's considered a benefit. And the height is reduced by 0.8 metres. Just to explain what you've got on screen, the white outline is what's now proposed, the red outline was what's been approved. So as you can see, that reduction in height, and there's also a reduction slightly in width as well, although it's repositioned here to add, sorry, distance from the boundary on this left-hand side here. So you've got the, some reduction in height and depth there. So here's an overall comparison, just of the existing proposed, more traditional form now proposed. And my view and officers' view is that the actual, what is proposed now is an improvement on what has previously been permitted. We've just got some photos now of the site. This is the north-east-southwest boundary to the properties and forge close. See the existing sort of domestic fencing along the boundary, and the starting of footings on the ground relating to the previous approval. This is the north boundary, back of properties fronting Hale Road. You'll see some of the soft landscaping and fencing in detail. You'll note some of the plant on site related to construction and storage containers, which are temporary, associated with construction works. This is the southern site boundary, residential properties and commercial property beyond. You'll see some temporary fencing in place there. There's just some more of the actual footings, and again, the southwest boundary in situ. So I've now take you to determining issues. The matters of principle and technical opinion are: principle of development, noting that the site lies within the developed area of Farnham; the planning history and differences with previous proposal, noting that principle of residential development on the site has been established; highways and parking, given that highway authority have raised no objection to proposal in this regard; terms of impact on air quality, note that, subject to safeguarding conditions and informatives, council's air quality officers have raised no objection to the proposal; terms of land contamination, the same applies, environmental health officers are satisfied, subject to stage two site investigation that has been provided, and again, subject to appropriate conditions. Terms of integrity of the SPA, noting that there's now a completed unilateral undertaking to secure contributions towards a Thames Basin Heath special protection area, in line with the avoidance strategy. So members have been asked to exercise their judgment on the impact on visual amenity, noting that the scale of proposed units would be appropriate to their plots, and the traditional design would be reflective of local built form; and the impact on residential amenity, considering the separation distances and orientations between the proposed units and existing, and appropriate conditions to deal with that in terms of landscaping and boundary treatment. And the last point there is the standard of accommodation, noting that whilst some of the units would not quite meet the required guidelines, national guidelines, they would still provide an acceptable standard of accommodation. And it's also noted that habitable rooms will be provided with appropriate outlook and light. So I'll just take members to the update now. Members will see that, as I already mentioned, unilateral undertaking has been provided to secure contributions towards a Thames Basin Heath SPA avoidance. And therefore, the revised recommendation A is that permission be granted, subject to conditions 1 to 18, and informatives 1 to 9 on the agenda report, and recommendation B is deleted. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Peter. Members, councillor Holt.
Chairman, this is in my ward, and whilst somewhat disappointed that the developer should come back and try and squeeze another house into this, I have to say that I think that the improved design is a very positive feature. And so to that end, I have no real objection. There is obviously a clear need for homes of this description in the ward. I've noted the comments from the residence of number 18 on page 55, but I'm satisfied that there is enough distance between the existing homes and the new proposed development to, for me to support it. Also, I think that I'm pleased to see that there is quite a lot of parking compared to some other developments that we've seen in the area in recent years. I would just like to ask officers about the bin arrangements. In Farnham, we are trying to keep the number of visible rubbish bins to a minimum. And so I would like to ask out of interest whether it is actually possible to get a dust cart down the road to pick up the bins, or whether they have got to be left in Hale Road overnight.
Peter?
Thank you, Chairman. With the revised layout, as far as I understand, they would have to take them to the entrance on Hale Road. We have looked at the possibility of having a storage area there. But as you can see for the plan in front of us, there isn't enough space within the applicant's site to provide that. So it would have to be taken to that and collected at that point. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one point. Whilst I think the architectural treatment is more in accord, that's really not a planning issue, I would point out on page 66, that the shoehorned fifth house is 10% under its gross area, recommended area, and that all three of its bedrooms are about 30% under their area. It would appear that plot five, that house, would be better if it was accommodating less people, less bedrooms. But that again, isn't within our planning remit.
Thank you. councillor Lea.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, like the ward councillor, actually, I'm, I like the fact they've come back, actually, and they've come back with a much more sympathetic, aesthetically pleasing, design, which I think actually is possibly the most overriding factor with regard to this. Yep, he's trying to squeeze in another property, but he's been very sympathetic to others and other properties around it, and in keeping, and being very generous, I think, with the parking, which we tend not to see. So I would be struggling at every turn not to be able to support this. So, well done.
councillor Hyman?
Thanks, I'll echo that. In respect of national space standards, we don't actually have any adopted, I understand, at the moment as part of the council, that might come through in local plan part two. So the size of accommodation is irrelevant. We're not allowed to have any standards unless we adopt the national one in terms of space. I was slightly concerned, I noticed on page 70 halfway down, it says, there's a big paragraph in the middle, and halfway down that one, it's like page 70, 7-0, it says, the distance between plots one to three and 14 to 20 Hale Road would measure between 11.4 and 12.0 metres, which would fall under the 18-metre distance recommended by the extensions SPD. In this instance, the distances proposed are typical of the surrounding area. I don't, I haven't seen any evidence that that is true. It does, but the problem is that it looks like the original four home design was almost put in on the basis that, hey, we can change that to five later and make it look even better, because that's what they've done. So perhaps it doesn't matter whether we're under that. And the same with the problems for the people living at 18 Hale Road, where unfortunately, this already has consent for four homes. And the problem that they've got with overlooking is going to happen whether we consent or refuse this. And perhaps I think I really agree with councillor Lea in saying that it's, it's better than it was. So I don't think I can object to it.
councillor Storey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In fact, what I was going to say has been pretty well covered by councillor Fraser particularly. But I am disappointed that the technical standards are not met for these, particularly plot five. And whilst we don't have a policy, there is a question in my mind of, well, just how far can you take it before it becomes unacceptable? And with plot five, I personally think they've already got that far. But I take the point, other than that, I think it's fine.
Sooner we get a policy, the better. councillor Ward.
Thank you, Chairman. Amazing what catches your eye that you're not thinking about, talking about. I happen to drive an electric car, so electric car points are now of great interest to me. So my question for the officers is, if we were going to put an electric point in the last development for four houses, why aren't we sticking one in here for the five? And a question which I possibly should know the answer to, but I don't, we seem to be providing mini bins rather than full-size bins for refuse. On page 56, the recycling bin and the garden refuse bin are 2.40 litres, and the domestic refuse bin is 1.40 litres. I know that we are trying to cut down on refuse, but I also know that some people, particularly those with young babies who have a lot of stuff to go in these bins, are actually going for larger bins. So comments, please, on electric points and size of refuse bin.
Peter Cleveland.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm afraid in terms of refuse bins, we have to be guided by what's recommended by our waste and recycling officers. And that's, I think there was a question earlier on one of the applications, why are we asking for that? And that's exactly the same requirement, it's a standard requirement that Waverley goes for in terms of a single household. We should be, I mean, the only point I would add is, recycling bins and garden waste are recycling, and we should be encouraging that. That's the only, that's just my own view. In terms of the vehicle charging points, it hasn't been requested by environmental health officers in terms of air quality. But if members feel it's appropriate to add it on there, it's something that's within their gift to add a condition on that basis. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Holt.
Thank you, Chairman. Am I right in saying that the bins, when they're put out to be collected, have to be dragged all the way down that road to the end of the road?
Yes, thank you, councillor Holt. That's correct. And that was the same as previously agreed on the floor.
And do we know that they're small enough, yeah, do we know that they're small enough for cars to get past them? Or do people actually have to drag them out onto the main road to be collected? Because that seems unreasonable to me.
Yeah, I think based on that plan and what the layout is, they would have to put them onto the public highway, effectively on the footpath.
That is really bad. Yeah.
It happens in an awful lot of places.
But we're saturated with these bins, aren't we?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Members, if we're ready, we can move to the recommendation. Yeah, I will just check. Do you want to put a condition in on electric charging points?
I've got one at home, so I'm not too adamant. But if anybody else feels that way, I would be glad to support it.
councillor Coburn.
Well, I mean, it seems illogical to me that, you know, we haven't got a great deal of air quality problem in Lottill Road, but we're here in the town centre, well, near the town centre where we've got far more of a problem. So for, to be logical, I would have thought it was a good idea to put one in.
Consistency, hasn't it?
Can we have one in? Peter?
Thank you, Chairman. And I'd suggest we use the same wording as the previous application was considered, if members are happy with that.
Thank you very much. That will be condition number 19. Thank you. Right. Members, we'll move to the recommendation A, that subject to completion of 106 agreement... Wrong. Recommendation A, that permission be granted, subject conditions 1 to 19 and informative 1 to 9 of the agenda report. Is that agreed? Please, please show. Against? Right, one. Permission is granted. Recommendation B is already deleted. So we move on to item B2, WA 2016 1842, Town Hall Buildings, the Borough, Farnham. And this is Peter Cleveland again.
Thank you, Chairman. The site is located to the north of the borough and to the east of Castle Street, as shown on plan. You can see the red line round the application site there on the corner plot. So an aerial photo of the site. The site contains a two-storey grade-two listed building, that contains six number units at ground floor level comprising of a mixture of class A1 shops, class E2 finance and professional services, and class three cafe and restaurant use. So the slides before you now, the existing elevations and plans. The existing class A3 use extends into the first floor of the building, sorry, the class A3 use is cafe and restaurant. The remainder of the first floor and second floor is currently in a B1 office use. To the rear of the site is a service passageway that serves all the units within the building as existing. So this is the existing north elevation. See the existing service doors at ground level and various...
level, and various external staircases and fenestration. Existing south elevation, frontage to the borough. Existing west elevation, side elevation effectively to Castle Street. This is existing ground floor plan and the various units I've just referred to, and existing side axis here, and various frontages on to the borough. It's existing first floor plan, broken up into a number of smaller rooms. Existing second floor plan, again, broken down, facilities and various rooms. So this is now the proposed north elevation. So planning permission is sought for the change of use of the first and second floor of part of the building from class B one office to C three dwelling houses to use to provide nine residential dwellings. The proposal would involve the installation of four dormer windows as shown on the plan before you, in the rear roof slope of the building, three of which would take these sort of box-like dormer, flat roof dormer windows, which would match those in the front roof slope, and one would take the form of a sort of gable type wall with curved parapets and stoning, which would accommodate an internal staircase extension. The entrance to the proposed development would be from Castle Street. The proposed units would comprise five one-bedroom units, three two-bedroom units, and one three-bedroom unit. The proposed three-bedroom unit would be accommodated within the converted third-floor space, and the rear service yard would provide an area for refuse recycling storage to serve the proposed residential units. So this is the proposed front elevation, there's no change to that elevation. This is the side elevation to Castle Street. The proposal would retain the existing clock tower in its current form, and the intricate roof area around the clock tower would not be disturbed as a result of the proposal. This is the, this is proposed entrance here into the flats, and it leads to an internal staircase. Proposed first floor plan, as you can see, it's broken down into the various units, the red arrows identifying the access to each of the proposed flats, and as you can see on there, this is the service yard below that you can see, and there's an outside amenity area for this flat here. This is the second floor plan, again, red arrows denote access to each of the individual units. And there's the third floor plan, which will provide the three-bedroom flat for you, and you'll see where the dormer windows are provided, these would serve this unit, and in particular, this is where the gable feature is to provide the internal staircase. So just got some photos of the site, hopefully members will recognise this building well, so hopefully that's helpful just in terms of context. Corner plot, view, west elevation from Castle Street, this again would be unaffected. This is effectively the north elevation, it's quite hard to take a wider view of it, given the topography and buildings adjacent. This is a view from inside the building as existing, looking north across the roof scape, which is helpful, and you can see structures in the distance from there, and existing roof slopes. This is the rear courtyard I referred to, already an existing service yard used for storage of bins and rear sort of service access. This is a south elevation to the borough, and as you see, the ground floor units there, and the existing frontages there above. Further south elevation of the borough, from the borough, sorry. So now moving to the determining issues, the matters of principle and technical opinions are, the principal development, noting that the site is located in development area Farnham, and the impact on designated heritage assets, noting that the council's design and heritage officer is satisfied that the proposal would not cause harm to the significance of the designated asset, and would preserve the special historic setting of the grade two listed building and the character of the conservation area. Vehicle and cycle parking provision, given that the county highway authority have raised no objection to the proposal in this regards. Impact on air quality, again, the council's environmental health officer has not raised an objection to a proposal subject to informative to control activities likely to create dust and emissions that source during the renovation and conversion process. Impact on archaeology is considered acceptable, there's no growl and disturbance there, and integrity of the SPA, noting that it is now a completed unilateral undertaking to secure contributions towards Thames Basin Heath special protection area. Members have asked to exercise their judgment on the loss of the existing employment use, noting that this needs to be weighed into the planning balance against the benefits of the proposal. Town centre development, noting that a residential use within a town centre is considered to be appropriate and contributes to the vitality and viability of that town centre. Standards of accommodation, noting that whilst there would be a modest shortfall of the two-bedroom units meeting the required standards, they would still provide an acceptable standard of accommodation, and all habitable rooms, appropriate outlook and light would be provided. Amenity space, the site is in close proximity to a variety of outdoor public spaces, there's no specific onsite provision, but it is in close proximity. Impact on residential amenity, the orientation of existing windows and surrounding development must be taken into account, and that prevents any direct and material harmful overlooking resulting, and the compatibility of uses. The applicant has worked very closely with the council and the environmental health team to agree a scheme of mitigation that would ensure that proposal would not lead to conflict with sound and uses, and that is in particular with noise, got commercial use at ground floor and restaurant-type uses, and we've got appropriate conditions to secure mitigation, effectively sound, to prevent that from being disruptive and causing complaints to established businesses there. So moving to the update, members will now see that a unilateral undertaking to secure contributions towards Thames Basin Heath has been completed, and the council's air quality officer has raised no objection to the proposed scheme, subject to the dust and emissions, informative I've already referenced. Therefore, the revised recommendation A is that permission be granted, subject conditions one to twelve, formatives one to eight on the agenda report, and the recommendation B be deleted. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Members, councillor Lea.
Thank you, Chairman, just an item of technicality, the previous application that we talked about, which councillor Fraser mentioned, plot five had one hundred and two square metres, which was the technical requirement for minimum gross internal floor area. On this one, for three bedroom, six people, exactly the same technical requirement, is only ninety-five square metres. Can I just ask for guidance on why the disparity?
Yes, hopefully Louise has reminded, there's different standards over one floor than two floors, and because these are a single-storey or a flat, it's a slightly lower provision and guideline. That's helpful. Thank you.
councillor Hyman.
Thank you, Chairman, I'm the board councillor for this, and I think that I have to support it, but I'd like to hear what other members think about it, if they've looked at it. I have had quite a good look at this in the documents, there are problems, actually, it would help me if you wouldn't mind if you would put up the technical issues and the bullet point page, if you know what I mean, that one, thank you very much. In terms of the principle of development, I think we all want to keep uses that will enliven the town centre, we wouldn't want this sat empty as office buildings, so I think we have to look at this seriously when it's been turned into residential accommodation, but there are some problems. We've got a flat in the loft, which is right next to the bell, which dings every quarter of an hour, and so there are various concerns that those people are never going to get any sleep, and that sort of thing. And of course, this is something where all the, all that officers can do is say, well, this is going to be taken care of under conditions, but you know, you can't stop the noise of the bells from going round in and out of windows and things. There's a big issue of noise in relation to noise affecting one particular flat from the botanist, which is Cafe Rouge below. The botanist have, I mean, I've got a number from Emery Planning, there's been letters going backwards and forwards over quite a period of time, and I've seen on page one hundred and one, and on one hundred and sixteen, one hundred and seventeen, it's been addressed by the officers, but I'm not entirely happy with that, because I don't think, basically what officers have said is that the things that the people at the botanist would like to have, which is to have the noise transfer or whatever carrying levels tested after construction and before someone, before anyone moves in, that's what they'd want, and the officers have really turned around and said, we can't do that, we can, we can set the standards, but we can't test it there, it's tough if it ends up that people can never sleep because of the noise from the botanist, that's their problem. So I am a bit worried about that, and I don't know what other members think about it. There are other issues in terms of vehicle and cycle parking provision, obviously there's no vehicle parking provision, Surrey are happy with that, it's a real problem, because we know these people, some of them are going to want to have cars. There's another issue that they haven't actually, they've put in some lockers, the applicant has put in lockers for cycle provision, for folding bikes, and I don't think we've ever allowed that anywhere else, and I think we're being asked to consent this on the basis that, well, they'll sort out somewhere on the first floor that they can put the bikes anyway. So I'm not sure we've really got that sorted properly, so if officers perhaps let me know or let us know whether the cycle provision is, space is real, and wouldn't get in the way of sort of emergency exits and that sort of thing. Again, this relies on public transport, and I think we've just heard over the past couple of days that the government's no longer going to support subsidies for public transport, so I don't know whether we should be looking again, there's a lot of these town centre developments, and insisting that the bus services are kept up. The last thing, sorry?
I was going to say it's not a planning issue, carry on.
Well, it's in the officer report, perhaps it shouldn't be in the officer report then. Page one hundred and twenty-two in respect of air quality, we are awaiting a response from the air quality officer, I think I read there, I don't know whether we've had an update.
There is an update, the officers did mention it.
Is that in your update sheet, or is that...
Yes, and Peter Cleveland did mention it. The council's air quality officers raised no objection to the proposed development subject to a dust informative.
Right, now, that's why I wanted to mention this, for that there is no consideration that I can find in this, in the officer report or anywhere, of the health of the future residents, their windows would face out on to the worst place that we've got in the borough, for, which is the borough, the road called the borough is the worst place in Waverley Borough for air quality, and those people there with, where cafe, you know, above Cafe Rouge is the worst place, and I don't think any consideration's taken, I think there's going to be some hot summer days when these people can't have their windows open, because it would be horrendous for them. What concerns me more is that there is no consideration of that in the report, so I've no idea, I don't know what we'd do about it anyway, without having a proper air quality action plan in place, but those are my concerns, it's a little bit, as though, I think we've got to consent this, but I've got a lot of worries about it, particularly in relation to those which have been raised by consultants for the botanist, which is noise carrying through from the, and you know, can we grant this without the cycle provision sorted? Thank you.
It is reuse of a present building that's already occupied for offices and other things, and on the parking issue, unfortunately, under this regulation, you don't have to have any parking spaces whatsoever, and in my little village, we have got fourteen shops, offices, and other things, not one off-road car parking space, so that's sad, but the officers will, I'm sure, come back with your comment on folding bicycles, and then I'll turn to councillor Potts.
Thank you, Chairman. We two shared this concern about that sort of provision, and that's not appropriate in terms of just having areas to have folded up bikes, but there is, it is on the first floor, but there is some quite large storage areas within the site, and we feel that appropriate provision could be made, there's enough space in there to make appropriate provision for the storage of bikes within the site, so that's where we intend for them to come forward with a scheme within there for appropriate secure parking. Unfortunately, it is a constrained site, it'd be better if it was a ground floor, but people will be able to use the bikes, we'll hopefully be able to move them off and off first floor provision. In terms of soundproofing point, what has now come forward, there's been a whole host of discussion about that, as you set out and referred to in the report, but what we're satisfied with is what they're now proposing is satisfactory to deal with it, and it is enforceable and it's secured by condition, so if it's not provided, we can make sure it is provided, but effectively what they're proposing is, it deals with that issue to satisfaction of relevant officers. And I think councillor Ishwood's always picked up on the other points, so thank you, Chairman.
councillor Potts.
Thank you, I'll keep it brief, Chairman, we've had quite a few of these sorts of developments coming forward over the last couple of years, especially in Farnham Town Centre, and I think the majority of us have really welcomed them, you know, when it's space, be it retail or be it office commercial space that's not being used, and I think these plans look absolutely superb. Are they absolutely perfect, to councillor Hyman's points? Well, unfortunately, nothing is, because we're working with a listed building in a conservation area, and we have to take that into account. The matter of parking, well, we know that residents can secure a parking permit, that's one of the benefits of living in the town, they can walk to a lot of the amenities they may wish to go to anyway, or they can get a contract parking permit, so, you know, they know that when they buy a property there. My big concern has been this noise issue, the clock and the botanist, because I think the last thing any of us want to see is an issue arising, so can we be, just be reassured, I know obviously Peter's just said that, you know, you've revised the conditions, are they really strong conditions, robust conditions that are in place? Because to my mind, that's the real concern here, as far as I'm concerned, I'm very supportive of the scheme, but I just want to be reassured that we're not going to have town hall chimes and, you know, noise from the botanist causing untold issues and impeding on their commercial viability in any way.
Peter.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, thank you councillor Potts. It's condition seven, which is a specific one, which is important, and I think that is precise in terms of applying the requirements of, securing the requirements of the detail set out in the various assessments we've had, and it is enforceable, so I think it is a strongly worded condition, it's appropriately framed to deliver exactly what we want, and hopefully, based on the experts, I'm not a sound expert, but from the advice we've taken, it is appropriate in terms of the types of uses that are going to be there to protect amenity going forward, because you're completely correct, we don't want new development impacting on existing, and particularly commercial and development, so we are satisfied based on the advice we've taken, that picks it up sufficiently. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Hartgriff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, actually, it was going to be a question on car parking, but it's being answered, but whilst I'm here, I would just like to say that nothing is perfect in this world, and on balance, I welcome this scheme, we are desperately short of small residential units, and this fulfils that need, it also means that we don't have any empty office blocks, so I welcome it, thank you.
councillor Lea.
Thank you, Chairman, to be very brief and concise, I think that actually we want to regenerate our town centres, and I think we need to breathe life into it, and I think to use and reuse existing buildings in this way, this scheme is fabulous, and we've addressed all the parking issues before with the Woolworths Building, so I can't see any reason, really, not to support it. Thank you.
Totally agree. councillor MacLeod.
Thank you, Chairman, I visited this building, it was shown round by the applicant, and I agree this is the best use of this building. I'd like to comment briefly on the clock issue, actually, I'm used to living with a grandfather clock, which I inherited from my parents, and you get used to clocks chiming every quarter of an hour, although sadly, the clock's currently broken down, but the comment I'd make, I think that whoever buys this flat on the top floor, they have to be aware they're buying a flat with a clock nearby, and if they don't like to live with a clock, they shouldn't buy the flat, so that would be my answer to that point. And my concern would be the other way around, that somebody actually who's objecting said that they don't want to see it, that the clock is turned off, because whoever buys the flat objects to it, and I think we should be, the condition should be more be that the clock is retained, than we're worried about the person buying the flat, because if they don't like the clock, they shouldn't buy the flat. Thank you, Chairman.
As my colleague just said, it's like church bells. councillor Fraser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes, caveat emptor, buyer beware on this one, and it's obvious to anybody purchasing a flat, but we must be aware of it too as planning committee, that whilst the noise from the botanist has been tolerated by the offices that were there previously, it might not be quite so tolerated by people trying to get a night's sleep next door to it, but it could be countered by air, by soundproofing. it could be countered by air, by soundproofing, not so the clock. And there's a long list of these noise intrusion assessments here to go through, but my guess is the town clock, the noise will be structural borne, and there would be absolutely no way at all of insulating it. So whoever buys the flat has to be aware of that, and so should we. The other matter of air quality touched on by councillor Hyman, there's two measuring stations in the borough, and whilst the bias coefficients haven't been applied, the raw data would appear that they are in fact 50% over the national limit recommended of 40 mu grams per cubic metre, they are reading between 50 and 60. So the air in the borough is pretty foul with nitrogen dioxide, and we have absolutely no notion about the particulates, because no one's measured them. So another case of, whilst the purchasers of these flats should be aware of this, and their searches should make them aware of it, we for our part must also be aware of it too, and we've got to know when to stop. But I am, on the whole, supportive of this one.
Thank you. Councillor Hodge.
Thank you, chairman. Sorry to dwell on the clock, but if you look at, if you look at the picture, the bell that strikes for the clock is way above the building in the tower, and it's just as obtrusive to people across the road as it would be in those flats, so I don't have any issue with it at all. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. If there are no further comments, officers, can we move straight to the recommendation? The revised recommendation that permission be granted, subject to conditions one to twelve and informative one to eight on the agenda report, and the additional informative nine noted above on the agenda papers. Those in favour, please show. Unanimous? Thank you very much indeed. Thank you. Two four nine three, erection of two-storey side extension alteration, does it amplify by drawings received on the 10th February 2017 at 29 Middlebourne Lane, lower born GU 10, three NH? And thank you for all members who joined us on a very wet site visit, I won't mention who didn't have an umbrella or a hat. Louise.
Thank you, chairman. The site is located on the northern side of Middlebourne Lane, and is occupied by a two-storey dwelling. This photograph, first photograph here on the top left, shows the side of the application property here on the left, and as you can see, there is an existing single-storey side extension on the property. This second photograph on the bottom left is taken looking between the side wall of the application property and the fence which is on the boundary. The extension at 31 Middlebourne Lane is shown in the right of the photograph. This third photograph, which is on the top right, is taken from the garden area and looking at the rear of the property. As you can see, the property has already been extended to the rear, with a two-storey extension here on the boundary, and a single-storey conservatory here. The proposed extension would be located in a similar position to where the existing conservatory is. This fourth photograph is looking towards the neighbour at number 35 Middlebourne Lane, and here is the single-storey extension that I pointed out earlier. These are the proposed floor plans, the existing conservatory and single-storey side extension would be demolished, and they would be replaced with a two-storey extension that would be situated to the side of the property, extending to the rear adjacent to the side of the existing two-storey rear extension that we saw in the photographs. This plan shows the proposed elevations, the extension would have a maximum height of 7.5 metres, which would meet the height of the existing ridge of the roof here. The existing two-storey rear extension at the rear would have its roof altered to integrate it with the remainder of the proposal. Three windows would be positioned at first floor in the side elevation, two of which would be obscure glazed, and one would be clear, and this replaces an existing clear-glazed window also in the side elevation. This plan shows a comparison between the existing street scene along the top and the proposed street scene along the bottom, and it shows the relationships with the adjoining properties. As you can see, the adjoining attached property has extended to the side, and the detached property on the right-hand side has the single-storey extension to the side. In conclusion, officers consider that the proposal would have an acceptable design and appearance, and that the proposal would have an acceptable impact on the adjoining occupiers. The proposal was also considered to be acceptable in relation to the SPA's parking and biodiversity. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, parking space provision, the effect on the SPA and biodiversity. The matters for members' judgment this evening are the impact on visual amenity and the impact on residential amenity. Can I also draw members' attention to the update sheet, which outlines an error in the report? The original agenda report said that there were three objections, but on closer inspection, two were identical and from the same property, so in fact, just two objections were received to the proposal. The recommendation remains as set out on the agenda report, that permission be granted subject to conditions one to four and informative one. Thank you, members.
Thank you, Louise. Opening up to you, and first councillor Coburn.
Yes, I requested both the site visit and asked this to come into committee. Let me make it very, very clear, I have no objection to an extension on this house, no objection to any family trying to extend their home, that's not what this objection was about. I wanted to see it in situ, because I found looking at the plans very difficult to understand the effect on this. And having done a lot of work on both the neighbourhood plan and the local plan, I'm very aware of our guidance on extensions. And what has worried me all the way through this application is the description of a two-storey side extension. Were that as it stands, I would have absolutely no problem with what is being proposed. I don't call this a two-storey side extension. Could we just go back to where you have the picture with the conservatory? Please, Louise, thank you. What you've got on this, you know, it's an original cottage, we have them all over the Bourne, Middlebourne Lane is a complete nut and mix, other roads have great long lines of these, and they are difficult to extend, some go up, some go out. This one has an extension, two-storey extension. Now, our guidelines are very clear, three metres for a two-storey extension, that's what it says, you have a two-storey rear extension, the guidance is three metres from your neighbouring property. This has a conservatory which doesn't affect anybody at all, it's single-storey, it doesn't affect anybody else. I can understand why anyone would want to change a simple conservatory into a more usable piece of habital accommodation. But what is going to happen on this site, and this is where I have an issue with this, you have a side extension which, if it ended where the original cottage ended, I would have absolutely no problem with it, because I think that's, will improve the look at the property. What I do have a problem with is doubling the size of that rear extension, bringing it to within a metre of the fence. Now, it does say in our guidelines, in special circumstances, if you can prove there's no harm to the neighbour, then that three-metre rule can be revised. But looking at this, and I'm glad we went on the site visit, I found it very difficult, even on the site visit, to work out the full impact of this. But to have that square-built form within a metre of the next-door property, I accept that the next-door property has extended towards the boundary, very close towards the boundary, but at, you know, ground level, single story. So I just wanted this to be a fair discussion in open, because I do think it's very much an unbalanced discussion, so, you know, I'm not leading the discussion, I honestly don't know what the answer is. I do have concerns about the size and the sheer bulk of built form that's going to be seen from both the neighbouring property, but also as you come up Middlebourne Lane, because you do see it from one side, I had a look on the site visit. And as I say, I just felt we should be looking at this in detail, just to see whether or not it's acceptable to both the applicant and to the nearby neighbour who's obviously affected. Doesn't affect the attached property as much, because that existing extension's been there a long time, and they've done some form of extension, they've got a conservatory as well, if I remember correctly. So, you know, the effect is very much on the property to number 31.
Councillor.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I went on the site visit as well. I'm not too hung up on the sort of bulk of the proposal. I am concerned about how it affects the light into the side window of the extension on the other house. It's quite a, quite a small window as it is, and it's obscured by the fence a little as well, so a two-storey extension is going to cut down the light quite a lot. But I am also aware that there are other windows into that space as well, so I'd just like to know what other councillors think.
Councillor Hyman.
Yeah, I got wet there as well. It was, well, we stood at the front afterwards, I remember, and we were looking at, you know, there is that question of, if we say yes, this is okay, then the people who live next door who only built a single-storey extension, you know, I find it difficult to imagine we would then allow them to build their extension bigger, so it's a matter of consistency almost. I agree with what councillor Hodges just said, and, but there is a window, sorry, there is a window at the front of number 31's little extension there, and that is an obscure glazed window on the side. Yeah, that one is an obscure glazed window, it's not, it's not completely clear. What councillor Coburn says about the three-metre rule, I, I just have this feeling that we ought to stick with the rule on this one, because, you know, that rule was there for a purpose, wasn't it? I suppose I have to ask our officers whether that rule actually applies, because there's some suggestion in the officer report here that it shouldn't be applied. I like Carol's logic on that, and I tend to agree with her that perhaps it should, it's such a tough decision, because, it's basically going to upset someone either way, and we're certainly not going to defer, it is a decision we've got to make, and it's one of those tough ones. But I, can officers please give us some sort of definitive position of the council on that three-metre rule in respect of, because there's already been an extension, what you have to understand if you haven't seen the site, is that there's, if we're talking about, let's say, the bottom right-hand, yeah, from there, that's an extension that was put on the original cottage, and there's also an extension on the side, so it's two extensions we're talking about. And it's turning the second extension into a big one that matches up with the first extension. It's very difficult to explain without seeing it, but all right, it isn't then, thank you. Can we ask for a position on that, on the three-metre rule?
I was going to say, I'm not quite sure if they're fighting over who's going to take the microphone. Louise? Peter? Louise?
Thank you. Just to explain the reasoning behind that three-metre rule, the SPD does quite rightly advise, it is guidance of course, not policy, that extensions which extend beyond the rear of a property should be positioned at least three metres from the boundary. This guidance is there to protect the other, well, adjoining occupiers from an overbearing impact on their property. Now, in relation to the adjoining property here, as they've already extended at single-storey level, they wouldn't use that space outside, which would, if a two-storey extension was located adjacent to an outside area, that would be very overbearing. But in this instance, as the area is already filled with extension, officers consider that there is no overbearing impact to this property. And in relation to windows at first floor, it meets the sort of 45-degree angle for light, and in relation to the window along the side, there would be some impact on this window, and officers do acknowledge that, but again, this is a high-level obscure glazed window, and the rooms are served by windows at the front and rear, and so in terms of the impact on the actual internal space, it's considered that that wouldn't be materially harmful. Thank you.
Must say, I personally was grateful that the site visit was called, because when I read the report, I thought, uh-uh, no way. When I saw, and as a former resident of Farnham, I thought I knew the area fairly well, but no Middlebourne Lane. Having seen the building, having seen the road, and the plans that were put forward, I saw the extension on the house to the east was the one that I had problems with. I didn't have, after the site visit, a problem with this, I thought it was reasonable and fitted in with the street scene. Councillor Potts.
Chairman, thank you. I'll keep it brief, I wasn't able to go on the site visit, but I have driven along the road and taken a look, and to my mind, it is very much a judgement in terms of a real unbalanced decision. However, I am of the mind, given the fact that the neighbouring property has light from two other aspects, that, as I say, I feel that this is appropriate, and I will be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Councillor Hill.
Yes, chairman, yes, I attended the site visit, I thought it was a very valuable exercise, I can understand why this was called in, but I think on balance that I don't really have any objection at all to the proposals, and given the officers' work on site lines and things as well, I think that this will be quite acceptable.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, can we move to the recommendation? The recommendation is that subject to conditions one to four and informative one, permission be granted. Those in favour of the recommendation, grant, please show. Those against?
Four, chairman.
Therefore, seven to four, permission is granted. There are no further items to consider, so that concludes our meeting, and a very short evening to enjoy the rest of your birthday, Peter Cleveland. enjoy the rest of your birthday, Peter Cleveland.